Time being six thirty, I'll call the Ashland Planning Board meeting to order. Throw call. Tricia is absent but with notice. Martine?
Yes, here.
Paula?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
Bethany?
Here.
And Linda Barnes is currently not here, I haven't heard of you.
No.
Okay. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. And Linda's here.
She just likes to make the green.
My mother tells me that when I was like two years old, I ran out in the backyard where there were other kids and I go, "Here I am guys, here I am."
This week I went to a conference online, it's quite interesting. One of the companies I met there was Housing Champions, Mr. Andrew Dorsett. And he's come to give us a presentation today on Housing Champions, what they do, and some affordable housing information, and some zoning information, and maybe some grant information. The floor is yours, sir.
My name's Andrew Dorsett, I'm the Department of Business and Economic Affairs from the state of New Hampshire. And I am Director of a program called Invest New Hampshire. My colleague is the person that runs the Housing Champions Program, Leanne Monahan. She couldn't be here tonight, so I came in her place. So the Invest New Hampshire Program was a hundred million dollar effort that the Governor was using ARPA one-time funds in order to inject money into capital for projects, for multifamily housing projects that had come to a halt due to inflation and other issues. And so that effort is well underway, we're issuing our final awards in October. And we're in about four thousand units throughout the state of New Hampshire. Our program is affordable housing, affordable housing is different layers of housing. You know, market rate is what the market will bear. Affordable housing would be the next level, it's really for, you know, nurses, teachers, that sort of thing that may not be affordable for, you know, it's not considered like a subsidized or a low income housing. The Housing Champions Program is a new program, we're actually rolling out the application, should be tomorrow or Friday, actually. The Housing Champions Program was designed to enable municipalities to voluntarily apply to become a Housing Champion. Once they get that designation, it opens up a series of grant opportunities to help support the community in housing. This year, we have, for this next year till June of twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, we have five million dollars to get to local municipalities in the following areas. The Housing Production Municipal Grant, so what that will do is reward communities that permit quickly housing projects that are considered affordable, that's eighty, that's considered affordable to persons making eighty percent of the average median income, and you take thirty percent of that income, we have a chart for that, it's produced by HUD. And those numbers are higher than you would expect, probably for each region, but they're, they are considered affordable. So that's ten thousand dollars per unit, so if a municipality permitted a project that was fifty units, for example, that'd be half a million dollars the community would be eligible for under that program. We have the Housing Infrastructure Municipal Grant, that is money that could be used for anything that could support housing, extension of sewer, water, sidewalks, lighting, any infrastructure projects that could potentially help support housing. Then we also have another program called the Housing Planning and Regulatory Municipal Grant Program, that's designed to help municipalities look at their planning, their zoning, have community conversations about housing, and helps communities look at potential barriers within their planning and zoning that could make developing housing more difficult. To qualify as a Housing Champion, there are six sections. They include adopting land use regulations, and again, this is all voluntary on behalf of the community, you know, if you want to participate. So adopting land use regulations that are going to be in supportive housing, like for example ADUs, I think there was a recent statute change that, you know, it was ADUs or other aspects, like, for example, if there's parking regulations that are overly restrictive, we have a list, a more detailed list that I can provide for you. Training of Land Use Board Members, as you know, New Hampshire Municipal Association, other entities provide training for land use boards, often boards, you know, it's difficult for them to take an opportunity, to take time out of their day to go to these. There is a requirement in this program that the boards would do that. We're looking at different ways that we could potentially team up with NHMA or other organizations to provide trainings that would be available to boards and commissions that are, you know, have challenging schedules. Implementation of Water and Sewer Infrastructure Upgrades, so what that is, is rewarding communities that have CIPs, a Capital Improvement Plan, thinking about the future of their water and sewer capacity. What we've found is, in a number of communities, they want housing, either market rate, affordable, or even low income or subsidized, but once it actually, a developer gets there, they realize that they can't meet the water or sewer capacity demands of a development. So what this would do is help provide seed money for, you know, for the infrastructure portion, you could actually get grant money to help you start to do that. But if you have a CIP or have done projects, water and sewer upgrades, those are counterpoints towards becoming a Housing Champion. Implementation of Transportation and Walkability Infrastructure, so for example, Ashland just upgraded, I think it was a year or two ago, the sidewalks along Main Street all the way out, like that, that's the type of thing that would count. There's grant programs out there, like the Transportation Alternative Program through the DOT, that help with sidewalk walkability, you know, and multi-level transportation improvement, so that gives you points. Financial incentives, so I don't remember the exact details of that one, but financial incentives for housing, that could be, I think, like for example, creating a revolving loan fund in your community, or having another organization manage a revolving loan fund, that could give you points. And there's other activities that support housing, the Housing Champions Program, and there's a lot of details in here. I'm not the Housing Champion Expert, that's my colleague, Leanne, I more manage the Invest New Hampshire Program, which is more direct capital to developments, but also, we have a, in our, my program, I do have components of this built in. We have the HOP Program, which I think the application is either due shortly, or it could have already passed, I'd have to look and see it, we're right around the time, Callie. So we have, I think, fifty-seven communities participate in the first round, and the goal of the HOP Program really was, like, I see, you know, this is a pretty active planning board for this meeting for the size of the community, I go to some and there might be three people, much larger. And the goal of that one is really to get communities to start talking about, talking about housing before a developer comes in, so that a lot of the issues are already being explored, like for example, you know, where do we want to, there's a housing crisis in New Hampshire, I think we're down to twenty-four thousand units across the state right now, and that number is supposed to continue to grow by twenty thirty, I think we're supposed to be up to about eighty thousand units that were down, and what we're seeing is like, that in and of itself may contribute to homelessness and other employment issues. One reason, there's already an entity in the state, for example, that deals with housing, the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, and they have a, they have a pretty steady, solid process to get a project implemented, but it's, it's a slow and steady process. What the Governor was seeing is that a lot of our employers throughout the entire state are now running into a barrier where they can't expand or maintain their production because the employees have nowhere to live. Like the prison in Berlin, for example, I've met with the prison and the jail, and they were both at about fifty percent vacancy, and they had a number of prison guards, one of the issues, they recruit them, they can't actually report to duty because they have to find housing and they can't find it even up in Berlin, so that's, that's a similar story we're hearing across the state, and since it's becoming a barrier for economic growth, the Governor said, this is now an economic issue, we're going to, we're going to do this through the Bureau of Economic Affairs, in addition to having New Hampshire housing, also try to tackle the issue. So, yeah, the Invest New Hampshire Program, I know saying the HOP, it involves starting community discussions, figuring out where do you want housing, what you can do, what needs to be done in order to actually get the capacity you need to, and then to look at planning and zoning, it does a regular, you can often do a regulatory audit where you review planning and zoning documents, lock, minimum lock size, you know, my sort of density, and then start to make changes to do that. I have another program, again, I think I'm issuing the final award by November next month, is demolition, like for example, you have the old mill on the water, I toured it myself several times, if that kind of thing would, it would pay for the demolition of the unusable structures, an internal demolition to then repurpose the building into commercial and residential, and again, that program, no income restrictions, it could be for market rate, or affordable, or even low income. And we have a piece of the program, which is the Municipal Per Unit, which is similar to this Housing Champion, where we would pay ten thousand dollars per unit. And so we put out, I think, about sixteen million dollars throughout the state for the Municipal Per Unit, our demolition program will put out about eleven and a half million, and then in the HOP Program, I think we've put out, let's see, I think it's five, seven point nine million, and then the rest went direct capital to investment and development of housing. And we're in, we've helped probably about four thousand units across the state be created right now, but like I said, there's a twenty-four thousand unit deficit in the state of New Hampshire, and it's really impacting the economy, and so, you know, while we, I think, had some significant impact over the past two years, there's still quite a bit to be done, and I think, from what I see, and I've heard the Governor say it too, we need all types of housing in New Hampshire, and it's up to communities really to figure out what, what they need, like what market rate, or affordable, or workforce, or subsidized.
Does the Board have any questions?
I did take a look at the regulations for your program, I did take a look at that, fairly extensive. Is there an application process, or what is, what is that?
That's a good question, so the initial program that we're releasing, it should be released this Friday, there will be an application that'll show up online, and I would, I would, what I would do is work with your staff, or if one of you are doing it, we're here to help too, so if you're working through, if you want to pass these around, that's Leanne Monahan's contact information, and she can help walk you through the application process. What, what you looked at was the rules?
Yes.
The rules are always a little more complicated, although it does encompass everything that we have to do.
Yes, it does.
Here's, here's, like, you can see, that's what we were, we were building, based on the statute. And we do have another program that's coming out called the, it's Invest New Hampshire Round Two, which I'll probably be involved with once it's rolled out, we do have the rules for that as well. And this is going to be similar to the capital program that I spoke about, we put, you know, over sixty million dollars in, so this is direct investment into housing projects, municipalities, not-for-profit and for-profit developers are eligible to access these funds. I have ten million dollars that we'll be dispersing for that, so. And this program's going to be a little bit slower, when the legislator created this, they did it, but they didn't actually fund any positions, so.
Mention that.
We've been doing it on the side, and we'll, we'll be rolling it out just a little bit slower, just, you know, if we don't have anybody to put it together. Yeah, and I think this meeting is pretty full tonight, probably because of specific housing.
And I don't envy whoever's presenting, so. Sir, we've got a couple of questions for the audience, if you don't mind, Jane.
So are the grants just a one-time deal, or is it something you can get annually? I mean, how, are these funds limited, it's like, once they're gone, they're gone?
So with the hundred million dollar project, those were all one-time, a developer could access the funds either through the capital program, through our demolition program, and the municipalities, I found also with the per-unit program, there's a real mix of what you could do with the money. We have almost no restrictions on the money that the municipality earns through permitting, so some municipalities chose to put a roof on a school. Manchester, for example, created their own, Manchester received, I think, two million dollars, and they started their own revolving loan fund, so it'll just keep building, they're going to keep loaning money to housing projects. And then we've seen, like, for example, Littleton, Littleton received a hundred and twenty thousand dollars through that program, they used a portion of the money to help the developer extend the water line and put in a fire hydrant, you know, that's just a smaller portion of it, and then I think they're saving the rest to use as grant match. That money and the new money is considered state funds, and so if you're going after, for example, a USDA grant to do water sewer upgrades, you could use these funds as a match, where if they're federal, you can't match federal, federally you can match state and federal. Or if you're going after, like I mentioned, it used to be called the State Groups, the School Program, now it's the Transportation Alternative Program, that requires a twenty percent grant match, you could use these funds to match that. So they're pretty diverse. The new program that we're doing, the new Housing Champions in Invest New Hampshire, that, both of those are established as a non-lapsing fund, and so we anticipate, the legislator hasn't funded it yet, so there's a lot, you know, all the gubernatorial candidates are talking about housing, it's a major issue, and I anticipate that there's going to be additional funds for it, so I would say it's probably going to be a lifting program.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Probably.
Yeah.
Keep words.
We're already meeting with legislators who are drafting, they're putting LSRs forward right now to provide additional funds into the next biennial budget.
Any other questions?
Linda has some.
Linda?
Yeah, is there a list somewhere of projects that have been funded, because that would give perhaps us some ideas of things we might not otherwise think of.
Yes, so that's a great question, and I mean, I have a general map here, if you want to try to decipher that, but if you go to our website, if you were to put in your search engine, Invest New Hampshire, or Invested So Free, you can see what we have active right now, there's, I think there's a map on there, there's also a general list of communities. What we will do as we, it's been a rapid deployment, as far as like making this happen, we had a few months to put the whole initial Invest New Hampshire Program together, and so when the dust settles, we're going to start to try to compile, compile some of the success stories, and show what some of the communities have done with the funds. You know, there's some amazing things, like Franklin, as you know, has been in a process of revitalization for some time, and the mills that are downtown have been a real difficult thing to, to really try to spearhead and change, and that's really critical to its revitalization, and so we teamed up with a developer, Eric Chimberg, Chimberg Properties, I don't know if you've heard of them, and they bought the old Stevens Mill, very massive facility, it's daunting to think about turning something like that into a, like a usable space, and they turned this thing into a, it's pretty high-end, but it has a section of it that they dedicated, not a section, there's a certain number of units that they dedicated towards affordable housing, they're the same high-end quality, but they're, they're are, they're going to be at affordable housing for at least five years. And then we, our demolition program also teamed up with the city, and there's a huge mill between the park and the river, if you've ever been out back, Stanley Mill, and so we teamed up with them and DES, and we're taking the whole thing down and cleaning up the site, and it'll become park space and be affordable, all the different housing stuff.
I just want to clarify, you've got some grants under the HOP Program and under Invest New Hampshire, but the grant programs under the Housing Champions, you have to qualify as a Housing Champion first in order to get those grants, is that correct?
You have read the rules so well.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
You have, yeah, you have to, you have to be able to score, and we've, we published, we'll be, in the application, we're going to also publish a guidance document.
Okay.
And you can really kind of tailor what you do, what you've already done, or what you'll do to get the points to become a Housing Champion.
Okay.
We're jokingly trying to figure out, you know, what does a Housing Champion get that's been thrown out there, like, you know, a huge wrestling, you know, remember those sort of things?
Sarah, you had something?
Yeah, my question for you is, you talked about dates and upcoming dates, I'm wondering, with the upcoming election we have, and Governor Sununu not being our governor anymore, not knowing where our next governor is, are these grants dependent on that, and could the next governor come in and do away with this program and all these funds disappear?
Great question, but I believe, you know, I've, I've met Joyce Craig, I think she's a candidate, I met her at some of our sites in Rhythm Cuttings, and she's a very strong performer of housing. Kelly Ayotte has also toured sites with us and was saying there. The programs that we have right now are funded, and those are funded, you know, independent of whoever becomes governor. I will say that also in the legislature, we meet and discuss, you know, these things with them, and it's a bipartisan issue, it feels like this is going to be something that is going to be on the forefront for some time, and like I was saying earlier, you know, it's beyond just kind of like a feel-good issue at this point, it's become a real revlimmer to New Hampshire's economy, and in a way, it's almost a race, it's like that all the surrounding states are, you know, feeling the same kind of pressure, and our corp, our companies that are here too are experiencing that, and if we can't meet their needs as a state for housing, so that they can have employees, then, you know, they may seek other places, they have to produce what they have produced, so.
What about?
It'll be an ongoing issue, no matter who's in.
What about job investment?
For job investment? You mean as far as like our workforce program, or?
Right, well, like Ashland doesn't have a whole lot of jobs for workforce, so is there anything that you guys do to stimulate that?
So we actually have a whole office specifically for that, Joe Dorian is the Director of that, it's the Office of Workforce Initiatives, and yes, we have things that do that, and does anybody know Bino Lamontagne?
Yes. He lives right down.
Yeah, he lives right down, yeah, awesome guy. So Bino is an outstanding resource, and I would encourage you to really, like, you know, don't let him, don't let him skip your meetings, make him come. He has his ear to the ground on manufacturers everywhere. I used to be a town manager, I was town manager of Littleton. One day, Bino shows up in my office, and he has this guy from Quebec who manages a company who makes parts for Mercedes, the outdoor panels, and the guy can't speak English, and so he wants, what did he want, I think it was like a fifty thousand square foot factory immediately, and so we, Bino brings this guy in, and he wants to bring in three very high, thirty high-paid individuals to help manage the facility, and, but Bino has those kind of contacts, he knows, if you have a space, I know, for example, Freudenberg, I've been hearing, you know, some, some things about Freudenberg, you see what really happens, sometimes these things, you know, move around and then.
We have spoken a little with Bino.
Yeah.
And we have had inquiries, some people wanting to build in here in that commercial area, but we don't have a lot of commercial area, so.
I mean, and that's something to think about, is relooking at your map, and, you know, that's where I think, you know, accessing some of the funds, like through the Housing Opportunities Program, to have a professional consultant come in at no cost to town, you know, try to get a grant to do that, and have them work with the community, old charrettes, maybe old roundtables, and just explore, you know.
I guess charrette would be a great idea for the town, for the whole town.
Two questions, and number one, I guess, thinking about becoming a champion, a municipality.
I can tell you're already a champion, so.
I'm trying to help people that are, but anyway, so, you know, for the town, this town, as opposed to Littleton or wherever, where there's probably a lot more unemployment in other areas, Berlin, right, because there's not, not enough people to really do the work there, right? So does that money, the money that's being given to that champion, Berlin, Littleton, or whatever, take precedence over a smaller town like Ashland that has very few job openings, okay, there's very little commercial entities here, okay, to warrant, saying, oh, we need, you have space, but.
Isn't it good, yes, it's a good answer.
Where are they going to work, right? So, that's part of it, so how do you really decide which of the regions or towns are the champions that get the most money, okay? And so we were talking about, this is kind of one-time, repair the infrastructure or make it better, to, you know, make the housing work in there, but I'm more worried, as many other residents are, it's on the ongoing later year increases for schooling, okay, having a bigger school, or teachers, or, you know, whatever it is, impacts our school budget, right?
Yep.
That's going to go down the road, I mean, so year after year after year, that's going to keep going up, because we are bringing more people in with children that need to get into our schools, which is very small. So what is the state doing on that basis for, you know, future stuff? I mean, you can't just give the money once and it's gone, it may not happen in the future, depending on who our governor is, right?
Right, I would say for, to stick to this program, what I would say for Housing Champions, so the designation itself is not competitive, any community that can show that they meet a certain series of criteria, score points, they can become a Housing Champion. Once you're a champion, then it opens up the door to this additional financing, and like to answer the question, is this one-time money?
Is it guaranteed for the future?
Right.
Year after year.
There's no, there's no guarantee, but also, but also, I think that this program isn't what you would look to for that.
Right.
For example, the infrastructure money, like if we cover that, schools excluded, this infrastructure money is really meant to help stimulate the municipality's investment in infrastructure, so, for example, let's say, you know, your wastewater treatment plant can handle, you know, a hundred thousand gallons a day, and you have a capital improvement plan that says, we anticipate a growth model of, you know, ten percent over the next twenty years, and we need to be at, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day. What this would do, it would give you, say, say you apply for a million dollars of the the infrastructure money, you, you couldn't do that kind of an upgrade with a million dollars, what you would do is you really would, it's designed to pair with other grant funds that are out there, and they've been out there forever, like the USDA has the USDA World Development, and they have infrastructure money in there, and they have huge grants that you can get to do your community infrastructure, but you have to have a local match, that's what really this is meant for. There's also programs, like, and this is really where your town administration are really collaborating with them to think about, that sort of thing, they can get other money through the State Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund, which is a long-established, funded every year, program. Other infrastructure improvements, there's, there's different avenues in each area. I would say to address the school, I actually have a really good resource, I can bring my phone, my work phone in with me, but I can get it to the planning board, and it's a tool where you can look at modern trends to see what, how, what, how is, how is, how are schools actually impacted, because it's not like it used to be, what we're finding is, in some pretty large developments, you may get a handful of students, especially if it's workforce, you'll, we're finding that a lot of times it's retirees, or it could be like, something like just a, two people coming in who are just not at that stage of their life, it's a little different than it used to be, but we have a tool that takes, you know, actual information, and then you can plug it in and take a look. We're going to, we're actually going to release a toolbox, I think it's set to be released in January, where you can, you basically plug in your community, and you can put in the type of project, and it will give you pretty, pretty reliable information about what any impact could be, like water, sewer, transportation, school, that'll be coming out, I think in January, we just hired a contractor to help us build that out.
What are you using for figures? I'd be interested to see how many kids per household you are saying, because I do beg to differ from, I am a teacher, and I have worked in city schools, that, you know, the state has had impact on housing, you know, in our close by La Conia, and I can tell you in my classrooms that I had a ton, I would say more than fifty. You know, in our close by Laconia, and I can tell you in my classrooms that I had a ton, I would say more than fifty percent of my students came from, uh, affordable housing or building from housing. And so I'm kind of curious where your calculations and your numbers come from because Ashland, in my opinion, um, does not fit the norm. You know, we don't have all that commercial property. And we, we pride ourselves on being in a town where, you know, we are small. Um, so I'm just kind of curious, I don't think the formula used from Laconia or Rancho or Nashua is gonna fit. I don't think it's a one-size-fits-all model, so I'd be curious how your, like, those figures.
I, I don't disagree with you. Um, I would say though, the, like, so I usually don't get into much of that. We have a, we have a office called the, uh, the Office of, uh, Community and Planning Development. And so that's where the real number crunchers are and they study all of these things. And what I can do is it'll, I can give you guys some information, I can send some links that they could share with you, you know, next time or by the sign. Um, I actually grew up in Ashland, so, you know.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, one thing else I will say is like, uh, Ashland, from my experience, is a bit of a bedroom community and a vacation community. And.
Rental.
And probably now, yeah, it's probably.
We, we have over four hundred rental buildings now.
Four hundred rentals, short-term too, or?
Uh, mostly year-round.
Year-round rentals, yeah.
Yep.
And so, uh, yeah, I would, I would say it's kind of, it's a, it's a neat place because it's close to everything. And to finish answering your question too about jobs, I think a lot of people, I know I used to do it. I, when I lived, I lived here even after I graduated from college for a little bit, uh, I commuted to Concord, you know, and to Durham for a while. So I think there's probably some of that happening.
I've done that for over twenty years.
Yeah, yeah. But it's a great place to live, so you have the lakes and everything around here.
Um, I think one of the problems too is if there's the assumption that affordable housing, I assume, would be by, um, for-profit owners that would then pay taxes. And the issue comes in when you have low income that is by nonprofits and then there's no, there's no income to the town from those kind of projects.
You, you know, there's, so there's, there's always gonna be some payment to the town. Um, I helped, uh, like the town of Goshen, uh, was one. They have, they had some significant projects that were happening and they were gonna receive some of the permanent money and they're trying to figure out what to do with it. And the developer really needed it to, uh, then to re-put it back to development to help this shortage in the finance debt. And so what I did was then was I built out a ten-year model to show, you know, this was a, a mixed low-income and affordable project to show what's the, uh, if they put this money back in, I was thinking it might have been three hundred fifty thousand dollars that they were gonna get, that it would, its return over a ten-year period in taxes and sewer fees and, um, and in water fees were, were much, it was a very good investment, you know, over a ten-year period. It was millions of dollars that would have a residual effect. Um, I think school, for example, is one of the things that you have to, you gotta kind of wrap your head around what a reasonable number is and to see, you know, what kind of impacts that are. But then on the same note, New Hampshire itself is aging and, you know, you think about like, you know, who's gonna come in and buy property, uh, as, as we all kind of start to think about downsizing or, you know. My own mom would probably be a prime candidate for one of these, uh, you know, low-income housing projects, but, and then her house, her house opens up. There's a process called filtering, and that's one of the things I was talking about where we need all types of housing. So even if, say, Ashland was to build, you know, a hundred high-end condos on the lake, uh, that would have some impact as far as, you know, people coming from elsewhere, but there may also be a number of people who, um, are living in homes and they don't wanna deal with it anymore, who move in. Now those homes become available, now somebody in an apartment, they move into those and then those apartments become available. And it's kind of a filtering process. And the same goes for like a Class A, uh, workforce, uh, housing project. There may be people living in apartments right now and they can afford a little bit more or, you know, they want something a little better, they qualify for that. They move into that, now those apartments open up and it, it's, it's just, there's a, uh, kind of a whole holistic, um, you know, uh, benefit whenever any type of housing is, is created from what we see.
Is there any kind of formula that a town like should have so many, uh, you know, low-income housing or subsidized houses?
I mean, to, to, uh, uh.
Cent money, Sarah.
To Sarah, to Sarah's point, I mean, I think that, you know, you, you don't necessarily, not every community is the same, but there is actually a, um, there, there was a, the Housing Needs Assessment. And then we have, we have this, we have this, uh, document that laid out exactly what you're talking about. And I think it was, um, it was, it was, uh, made more unique for each community. And then the regional planning commissions, uh, adopted it as part of their regional plan. And so I think it exists and you're aware of it, yeah, so.
Andrew, and that can be, will come out in a charrette.
Yeah, yeah, in fact, that information's global.
I think it's really good, so if you could look into a charrette.
Yeah.
One, you know, I, from, from.
I've been in a couple of charrettes before.
Those design charrettes are awesome.
Yeah, I've been in a couple before.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, great, great thing, it involves the community, it tells you what's out, what's available, and it really gets a good sense of, of, uh, what's, what's needed.
A design charrette is amazing because the community participation, business administration, the government participation, and by the end of it, you get a package with a vision that you can then carry on to all the different programs that are out there, any grant programs or even use to attract, attract investors, so.
So, so if you could please look into that for us? All right, uh, you've, uh, done well, did, I know you had your hand up, so.
I had a question, but she, her question was very similar to what I spoke about.
Okay.
People that would be interested in the housing, you were talking about different classes and so forth, would they be paying taxes and would they own the home?
So our, my new, my new program, the new investment action program, I think we actually have the ability for developers to, uh, apply to, for home ownership.
So you provide the money for the developers to do the construction as far as that?
They're able to provide money all the way around.
Yeah.
They're full circle.
Yeah.
All we do is give them the land.
Oh, not certainly.
No, no, the, the developer will find the parcel, come to them, do, do whatever they need, there's a whole long process involved in it.
They, before they come to us, they will already come to you, because when they come to us, they, they have to be permitted and ready to go. So, the, the community itself already vetted and decided if it was something they wanna do. Our programs, we're not forcing anything down, you know, yeah.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Jane, Jane is our land use secretary, she will be in contact with you.
Yeah. Maybe I can, oh, here's, you can give it to her. Okay, cool, well, very good, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right. Next on, on the agenda is we received the questions, or the response, written responses from the questions that we asked. Other than, uh, that, I'm, I am gonna ask Jane if she could put these up onto, um, the planning board webpage, make that folder, Mill Pond, scan these stuff into it. Um, does anyone have any questions based on the questions, any comments or anything?
I do not.
Okay.
Something good to add to a whole packet as we get into the project.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. With that. Yep. Um. With that, I, um, would like to move into the zoning ordinances that we, uh, assigned to people. Bethany, Bethany and I, um, have been working on chapter two. And, um, there was some stuff I would like to bring forward for discussion.
Was it article two?
Yes, article two. Yes, Dan.
Um, even though you have the answers to the questions, is the design review portion still?
The design review portion would be closed now that we have the answers.
Now you have those answers, okay, thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions? I know.
Sure.
You just confirmed design review is closed, so I want to confirm we are not on the agenda for the October second meeting?
Correct.
Okay. And you are in receipt of our site plan application?
We have, we have now received it and we've been able to start processing through it.
Okay.
Um, we have been looking for these responses, did not realize it was face down on the bottom of the box.
Ah, yes, that was part of the site plan application session.
We have been looking for them, that's why we sent some emails looking for them as well.
I haven't received any emails from you guys.
So, we've been talking with Kevin.
With Kevin?
Yep.
Okay, I'll confirm that, um.
We got the, uh, we got it now and, um, we're good to go.
Okay. Um, do you have a contact for the impact study? That's something I've been asking for.
Um, that's something we, we're going to, we do not yet, we are going to discuss some of that tonight.
Okay, that'd be great if you could get that, because that's a lead time item.
Yep, um, we will be having a presentation on the second on that.
On the second, okay.
So. I, I believe.
Okay.
Not a hundred percent sure.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Oh, Jane, could you screen this and send it to me?
Yeah.
Send it to you?
Uh, to all the board.
Yeah.
That is the, um.
Oh, from Invest New Hampshire.
That's from Invest New Hampshire where they have done stuff. Okay.
This is the transcript for that webinar, I just.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
I emailed to you all the, uh, information, but, um, Linda was on it and she wrote some stuff out from.
Well, this is, this is actually Otter AI, so I took the video of it and I uploaded it to Otter AI and it transcribed the whole thing. So just, you know, so that you have the verbatim. This is the webinar, I just thought that way you don't, you don't have to go through and help or something.
I did it, I was there also.
Yeah, but this just gives everybody a reading.
Yes, yes.
This was that whole presentation, this was the whole presentation.
Legal changes and everything.
Right, so this is the transcript, John, it's, I just wanted you to skim through it and find stuff this way. Jane. Jane.
Come on, I got one.
Yeah, this is a copy, but this is a transcript for that webinar on the updated laws, so. That way you don't, you can watch it, but it also just, you, you have.
Yeah, scan it up.
Yeah, the only other one.
Okay, absolutely. Oh, perfect, yeah, glad you.
Um, actually, Jane, wait, wait one second. All right, um. So we acknowledge that we have made a slight error and that the incorrect version of the zoning ordinance was in a place where we were using it. That, that has now been replaced with the correct version. The version which I sent to you with, with the, um, with all the red stuff on it, um, that, the two of us have been working on, it's very similar, um, our section is extremely similar. I will send you the updated one, the twenty-four one, um, shortly. I'm working on moving everything over.
When did that go out?
What?
When did that go out?
I didn't do, I didn't send it.
You, right, Jane sent it.
I printed them, it was in their envelopes or folders.
You have the printed two thousand four, two thousand twenty-four in your folders. The, today it was uploaded to all three, there are three sites that you can get the.
Yes, I saw that, right.
And we were unaware of that. There are three, so you can get the, get them under land use?
Planning board?
Planning board.
Zoning board?
Zoning board and on the.
Forms and documents page.
Right.
The one that I printed was the one that you sent me.
That is correct.
Okay. I did not print the whole one for everybody because we couldn't decide whether to do the twenty twenty-three or wait until the twenty twenty-four.
Well, it's the twenty twenty-four one that should be.
Then I should print for everybody, all right.
Yep, so we will get, those of you that need it, um, let Jane know and she will print off a, a fresh copy of the twenty-four. Some of you should already have it.
And I can send it to, if anybody wants to, just email me, I'll email it to you.
Um, and that is now the, the version which is up on all three sites on the town webpage. Did not realize that there were three separate sites on the town webpage. So, all right.
I'm outta here.
Thanks, Jane.
Yep. So. Currently, under two point one, we have commercial zones one and two. But zone two is not, uh, neither zone one or zone two is actually well-defined what is in each zone. Um, so what we've done is looked at that. Um, we also have the business, the business district zone, which would also follow in the commercial zone. We would propose that zone two become a mixed-use zone. And zone one would be the commercial zone. Commercial zone would be, um, well, we're gonna get into that in just a minute. Industrial, commercial, obviously is industrial, commercial. Village residential is, um, also the compact area, um, and we do need to define the compact area. So, um, it will, description is below. Rural residential, I would also think that we should include agricultural into that because that is the yellow on the map, if everyone can see the map, the yellow, that is your rural residential. It's pretty massive. After that, we have the Pemi overlay district, which is the hash mark on the, I'm already inside of the map. Then we have the Squam River and Squam Lake, which doesn't go the entire length of everything. Um, and that's something which I'd like to discuss a little later. And then floodplain. We currently have the floodplain listed in the special Chris's section. I think we should move that from his section to here as an overlay on a map so that we can have everything on one map so we know where everything is. Because when you come to the floodplain, which I'll pass out. It's, it's actually, um, very significant, more than what I had thought it was, especially in the downtown area. Industrial, commercial kind of follows the same thing as the floodplain in a lot of area. Our industrial land is that floodplain area. However, in two thousand four, a portion of the industrial was removed and made commercial. It is still in the floodplain, Mill Pond.
Okay, okay.
Yep. Um, going by the USDA or FEMA flood maps, it still shows that as a Class A flood zone. And these are the updated maps from our, from our thing, so we have concerns there.
I think one thing we need to be very careful with is there are zones and there are overlays.
Correct.
The overlay can be over a zone.
Correct.
It does not, and I think we need to be careful to make sure those.
Very separate.
Yes, very separate things. Zones have specific requirements, things we can do there and so on, and the overlays are on top of that.
Right, they're, they're restrictions. Right, they're restrictions on top of the zone for that area, because the zone goes across the whole town. The overlay only goes where it's affected.
Yes, yes. So I think we, I would say have a section describing and identifying the zones. And then another section describing and identifying the overlays.
Somewhere I have a pen, I'm gonna steal yours. So we can, uh, easily separate that out. Okay. No changes were made on the description down, following two point one A. Two point two, um, we need to define the, what is available in the commercial zones and what zone one is in zone two.
Okay, there is, if you go over to the sign section. It delineates commercial one and commercial two. Commercial two is West Street down to and including the mobile station. Commercial one is from the, not including the mobile station, but the, the rest of the commercial district.
Correct.
That's the dividing line.
Right. However, in some documents, it only lists commercial two as being the Mill Pond area. And I, I was confused by that.
You're right, yeah, we need to.
So that's why.
Need to check some things, yes.
And so for commercial one. In, in both commercial zones, it says that cell towers are allowed. There is no possible way to put a cell tower in any of the commercial zones. You don't have the, the... A, you don't have the line of sight that you need, because it's, it's Main Street that you're trying to get the cellphone coverage to. B, you don't have the falls zones and everything. If you read the cellphone tower ordinance, um, it just ain't going to happen in, in commercial 1. So I would like to strike cell towers from commercial. It is in the industrial, which is where it should be, but it also should be in the rural residential, because that is actually where we're putting them, so...
Is that what's listed as communications towers?
That's communication towers, yep. Okay. So... Commercial 1 is, is established with water and sewer districts located on Main Street from the intersection of Mill and Main Street to Winter Street. All buildings on the first floor are commercial, apartments are allowed on the second floor other than, other than residents that are grandfathered. Storefronts, conducting wholesale and retail business, offices, banks, personal services, medical facilities, theaters, halls, clubs, restaurants, accessory units, apartments. Six unit per lot is what I'm proposing here.
Four apartments?
Four apartments, yeah. Because quite frankly, the buildings that you have with the land that you have, even six... It's starting to push it. Currently, the one that we have would be the old Luft Store. That has, I believe, six in it, and that would be the start of it. Other than that, um, three, three and four is the max on most of them. Especially when you consider that the first floor is supposed to be residential. And that was something which was added in 2008, I believe.
Residential or retail?
Retail, it's supposed to be retail, 2000.
In commercial.
In the commercial district, yes. So what I would propose for commercial 2, the big change is I would take, I would propose that we take the Mills LW Packard Woolen Mill, which is now listed as industrial, and move that to commercial.
It's what now?
It is currently listed as industrial. It is right in the middle of, of the town.
And you're moving it to?
I would propose that it gets moved to commercial. My reasoning, as, as Mr. Dorsett said, it would allow it to have different avenues, shops, apartments, condos, parks. There's money out there to, to do all of that. And it seems logical, it's not going to ever be an industrial building complex again.
What about with the other, would you propose doing the same thing with the other old factory buildings sort of adjacent or right in the same area as Packard?
Yeah, yeah, the entire Packard Woolen Mill area. So, so Mill number 3 would stay the way it is, but all the other ones, well, they would all be, they all would be zoned commercial, so...
Because that sure would open up a lot of possible uses for that.
Exactly, it really would. So stores, shops, conducting wholesale, retail businesses, offices, banks, personal services, theaters, halls, restaurants, accessory, lodging facilities, hotels, residence, including apartments, residential buildings, that would include condos as well. Personal care facilities, marinas and storage. Yeah. And the reason I added marina and storage is because we have a section of town which currently is zoned rural residential, that is just marinas and storage. Our regs say that, I didn't actually change that. Our regs actually say marina and storage is commercial, so I'd make the marina area commercial as well.
That currently is, we're talking, um, it currently is rural residential.
No.
Is it marinas?
No, the marinas is right here.
Yeah.
That's rural residential.
That's rural residential, that's what it said, yeah.
It is. And that's why I would, I would turn it to, um, commercial mixed use. Okay? And what I've also done is, is a very detailed map here.
Kendall, would that be to reflect the way that it currently is used?
Correct, yep. That's all, that's all my, what I've done here, or what we've done here, is to reflect... What is currently here. It's not making any news, anything new, it's just, here's what is there, so...
Sort of updating the classification.
Right, updating what it, what it, we've allowed, what it is and what makes sense. So, uh, current, commercial, retail office spaces on the ground, oh, I already said that. That was an amendment which was done in 2016. Any, any questions on that? So what is purple there would be village residential. What is orange would be commercial. And what is red is industrial. Which brings me to the industrial portion. The, if you look on that floodplain map that I handed you, anyone wants, you can have one. Funny thing, our floodplain and our industrial, for the most part, line up pretty well to each other. Okay? And with that in mind, currently we allow manufacturing, packing, processing warehouses, railroads and truck uses, offices and printing, research, testing, storage yards, accessory uses, storage and shops for the conducting of any wholesale and retail business, offices, banks, personal services, medical facilities, auto services and garages. Being with that is in a flood zone, they're not allowed to have below-grade fuel tanks and stuff like that. I'm concerned about oils and stuff getting into the water, environmentally sensitive. I think I might strip that out of the industrial, commercial, and keep it only in the commercial district, which would reflect the mobile area.
So you'd move it out of industrial and put it in commercial?
Just keep it in commercial, yeah. Yep. Cell towers, communication towers, theaters, halls and clubs. There is a description in the 2004, uh, 2024. There was a minor change there, which I would do, which would, um, take the mill out and make that, as I said before, commercial. LW Packard Mill. Please feel free to stop and ask me questions.
Yeah, I do have a question, actually. You were talking about taking out the auto service stations and garages, but yet we have in there railroad and trucking uses, which could be chemicals.
Could be.
Storage yards could be chemicals.
It could be.
Accessories, so I mean...
Not as much, though.
I mean, if we'd say it can't be a gas station, I get that.
Yeah, and that's exactly what I'm referring to, is a gas station.
I think we just need to be a little more specific.
And we absolutely can be.
I mean, so let's open a repair facility for cars or tractors or something, I mean, I think that's fine.
Yep. Stuff that is movable is, is preferred versus stuff which is not movable in the ground.
Yes, completely agree, yep.
So you could evacuate it.
Exactly, that, that was, that was our thought. Yeah, I'm sorry, it didn't print out well. Um, I have emailed this all to you and I will email you the new updated. Village residential is defined in here as the area having public water and public sewer. So that should have to be expanded now, especially with the new project going in on Thompson Street. So, um, the boundary lines would be expanded. What I've done is I've, I've used the name, the roads as well as the lot numbers in cases, so that we get a better idea of where it is, versus just the lot numbers. And we can go over that much more in detail.
This is going to take...
Right. That's going to take a computer and a, and the town webpage and going through it like that. And we will, we can do that. But ideally what that would do is, the area that is in purple here, it would actually bring it down here to the New Hampton Town Line, because the water and sewer extend down to there. And it would bring it up here, around and over here, because it now goes, um, River Street and the length of Thompson Street after the project is done.
Water goes down to the town line, but sewer does not?
Okay. So we would stop where we are there. Okay? The biggest thing is it's going to be expanded out here. Ironically, I looked in the map section up at the planning board office, and there's a map that Jimmy, Jim Rollins did, which almost mirrors what we have now.
He wrote the first zoning ordinance.
1968 he wrote it, and it's, it very much mirrors what we have now, in a lot of ways. So yeah, I'll just expand this out like this.
And what color will that be?
It will be purple.
What's going to be commercial around the marinas? Where is that going to go?
Where the marina is currently.
Down River Street?
Nope, just, just at the marina itself now.
Okay.
Yep.
So just like at the...
And you're talking about their parking and storage across the street, correct?
Correct, yep.
And not the parking for the town beach?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Does that also include their large facility down River Street too?
It does not include that building.
That's not that marina, it's a different marina.
It is a different marina, but, but it's a storage facility. It is allowed in the rural residential, kind of. I do not touch that at all.
And you have residences across the street?
You can.
Well, they're there now.
Right.
And next to it.
Yep, yep.
On either side.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You say you're going to put water and sewer going to the right over that. What's that, down River Street and River Road? Is that what it is, down Route 3?
So down Thompson Street. Around to River Street.
Oh, this is Thompson Street on the right-hand side?
So...
No, you're over one more.
Right here.
Well, you went down by the...
Yeah, I was, I was down here, it should be over here. Right this.
Okay, so you're not going on the Route 3?
No.
Okay.
No, because they don't have sewer there.
Because you went across that way and then the other way on Thompson 3.
For this purpose, it would just be this.
I have water, no sewer.
You have water, no sewer?
Yep.
On Route 3?
No, on Thompson Street.
That's the Thompson Street project you're talking about?
Yep.
That's why all the trucks were at the bottom of Thompson and...
Mike Latulip doing that for his development.
Yeah, that's a separate thing. And, and we would, we would talk with Andrew Benton and verify all of this before. This is just preliminary for discussion. So yeah, that would include, Avery Road up to Harold Avery Road, Ledgewood Lane, Mill Street, Squam River, Murray Church, Elm, back to Depot Street, Thompson Street, High Street, to River Street, River Street intersection back to Thompson Street. And it would go up Highland Street and up to just about Jeff Leifert's house. And then from the intersection of Highland Street, School Street, around back to Main Street, which is pretty much what's shown there. Rural residential, the, really the only addition that we would add to that is, um... Is some language on manufactured homes. And, and on, um, commercial camping stuff, which brings it in line with the state statutes. Manufacturing, manufactured houses, these homes must be stamped with a HUD approved as defined by Title 24, Housing and Urban Development Part 3280, which is what is required for financing anyways, so. Manufactured homes must be constructed to safety standards. Residential camping parks, so the, the thought on this was Ames Brook, to be honest. Provide that all current sanitary laws, regulations are met and provide the State of New Hampshire Division of Public Health Services sanitary laws and regulations, recreational camping parks, Concord, New Hampshire, 17, 1976, as subsequently revised.
So this is only rural residential?
Yeah.
And that's just the section of Ames Brook that exists in Ashland, correct?
Correct. That's, that's... The other camping area is, is town-run and it's technically exemptish.
Ish?
Ish. Will be. The Pemmy overlay, nothing changes there. I did, what I did was define the actual area of it. This is all the land from the town, town line, west border of Ashland to New Hampton Town Line border, Pemmy-Jewossett River to the western border with the town of Plumeth and Bridgewater. This will be in the rural residential and industrial zones. Squam overlay. This one... Got my pages mixed up here. The Squam overlay is 250 feet from the center line of the river on each side. So what I did was I did, I did a description of each side, okay? And, and I would like to extend it...
I was going to say, doesn't it stop at a...
So it, it stops at the, at the dam on River Street and doesn't continue through. And it seems that we have the space for it to continue through up until we get to, um, the mill complex. But with moving the mill complex to commercial, ultimately I would like to expand that overlay.
All the way through town?
All the way through town, so what we're doing is creating a, a much better atmosphere, a park, a much nicer area of living, commerce and development. But I definitely would like to expand it now down to, to the mill area, to downtown. So basically Memorial Park. Ultimately, once, once the mill is gone, we would expand it all the way through.
This may be not particularly important, but insofar as the river shorelines have shifted over the years with, you know, whether it's floods or, you know, so on and so forth, does that matter in any way to us?
So, it, it does matter somewhat. So if you look on this, um, let me read this. "The district extends 250 feet inland from the shoreline of Squam, Little Squam Lake, Squam River and upstream from Squam River Dam." I'd like to extend that down to... Down River Street, the River Street Dam. "For the purpose of determining the boundaries, this district shall begin at the water's edge at the lake level of 561 feet as measured at the New Hampshire Water Resource Board gauge at the Route 3 Bridge over Squam River in Holderness." So that's how, that's how they determine the whole thing. So it, even if the flood changes, it, it still has a defined area.
Did you mention the bridge and the channel?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
And what, this is an overlay district. So you have the district's restrictions. And then you have the additional thing that structures on slopes which exceed fifteen percent cannot be built. Application of fertilizer, pesticides and herbicides. Okay, again, down, going down through town, that's not an issue. Underground fuel storage tanks, well, this is also a flood area, so we don't want those tanks there anyways. And currently, none that I'm aware of. And lastly, any excavation from which an earth excavation permit is issued under RSA One Five Five, One Five Five E is required. So they just have to go and get, go through the permitting process for alterations. So.
Do you have the code that's going on already? Do you have the code that's going on?
And then the last overlay district, which I would like to add, which is, is the one that you have there, the separate map. I know they passed out. This, this map right there?
Yeah.
That one in your hand would be that. Last year, we added it to the zoning ordinance that's in your section. And I'd like to just move it from your section.
Section five?
Yeah, the language was updated.
The language was updated, we're just moving the entire language and everything from the special, what, what was your section?
It was section five, I don't think it's in there.
Oh.
Not in for the new.
It's in the new one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's in the twenty-four.
It was there, we just changed some of the language that was there to begin with. It's under.
It's under, yeah. Article four, yes. You have five, uh, four, sorry.
You had me worried, I was like.
Sorry, article four, it's in, it's in article four.
It's a flood hazard.
Right, the flood hazard, and I just want to move that as, to make it an overlay district because it has significant restrictions and everything for flooding. And recently, you know, we have had some pretty significant floods and looking at what's happening now across the country, we may have some more. It just brings that as an overlay, it would be a map that, you know, another mile or that would be added to it.
Okay, yeah, four, four point one oh.
Yeah. However, having said that, I will say that it's four pages lengthy.
Yeah.
But it is very detailed. It was voted in by the voters last year, last year, the changes were. Not that we had a whole lot of choice because the federal government mandated a lot of this. I think that's enough for, for now. Do we have questions, concerns?
I think what would be helpful is to take the zoning maps, and I think it's on.
So this.
If you go to forms and documents.
Yep.
On the town website.
So what I.
The new zoning maps are there.
Correct.
And I think if we take those and actually color in the lots, I think that would help us visualize.
So.
I mean, this gives us a, a general overview, but I think we need to make sure that we're not all of a sudden leaving out one little piece.
Correct, absolutely. Because that's sort of what seems to have happened here.
Yeah.
And there were two, two separate pieces that you have to wonder why. One, you have a rural residential section right in the middle of the village section.
Yeah.
So.
But on the let me go to that. On the forms and documents page, under, let's see. Down under, under the town clerk and tax collector, there's the twenty, twenty-one tax maps. And if we take those, and it's multiple pages, but if we take those and color code each lot.
It would be under town clerk and what?
A town clerk and tax collector, on the forms and documents page. Under the category town clerk and tax collector, under twenty, twenty-one tax maps.
Yep.
With a new number system.
Correct, that, that's what, that's how I did this.
Yeah. But I think that, I think we need that to, to really vis, to double check every change that we're making.
Oh yeah, absolutely, and if we could all just do that, that, that would be ideal. I've sent you a rough draft of it. Did, I, I can send it to each of you in a, as a shareable document so we can work on it. If you want. However you want to do that.
I can do it through Google Docs.
That's what I'm talking about. That's what I'm talking about, I can send it through Google Docs, then we can all take it, open it up, look at it, make, make comments on it so that we all are on the same page.
Yeah, I think we need to do the comments on the side.
Yes.
Yeah, and not change the.
Not change the maps, we do the comments on the sides.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will work on getting that done.
Yeah.
Okay. Any of you have any comments?
Yes, these changes that you're making as far as zoning goes and residential and commercial, isn't that all different tax brackets and so on and so forth? The people that are involved in these changes, will they be notified or they just?
Oh, this has to go before the voters.
Okay, that was my other question.
So, so.
It does need to go in front of all the voters explaining the changes that you're doing.
Absolutely. The, we are looking, so at our last meeting, we took a, a brief look at them and realized that, based on some comments, that the entire thing needed to be looked at and fixed. There were some areas which need some fixing. Each member has taken, is taking a section. Each member was going to do what I just did. And we're going to have for, hopefully by December, we will have a final document. We will have two public hearings on it, then we will go to town meeting, to the deliberative session, make a presentation there. Bring your pillows, it's gonna be a long one. And then.
You always are.
Yeah, yeah. And then in March, the second Tuesday in March, you will all get the opportunity to vote on it. And I'm sure that there will be comments both ways. But what we're trying to do is, is to A, strengthen our zoning ordinances, to bring them up to where they need to be. And we're trying to show what is actual, what, what currently exists to what we say exists.
So this, for Eddie Hope, for any of us, will this eventually eliminate this housing project?
Totally separate issue.
Uh, yeah, very separate issue.
Separate issue.
They, they don't, they don't, right, they're totally separate, but this will help us in the future.
Speaking of that issue, do we have anything with the impact fees in the back burner?
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that in just a minute. Yes, ma'am?
I just have a question about the, if this were to, like, all these changes were to pass and is there ever anything like, like somebody's grandfathered in, like say.
Right, so, so the houses which are, are there. Right on, a great example, everyone drives by it every day, is next to the Village Pizza, there is a house that is in the commercial zone. That house is, is there, it's grandfathered, it's, it's wonderful, it's happy.
Oh, I see, okay, so it would be like for future.
For future. So in the future, if, if she decided that she wanted to put in a you know, a shop or something because she, she would be able to. If she wanted to continue living there, she obviously can.
But our, our description of commercial zone does include, does allow.
Right, and it is allowable in commercial zones too, you're right, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It just can't go the other way.
When we have the, this is a question, when we have the draft that is gonna be part of the public meeting, would that go on the town website so people can actually look at it?
Yeah.
Review it so that we, you know, they don't have to just try to.
It'll all go on the town website as well. It has to because it will be in the town warrant. Yep.
Is that where people can look at it and think about?
Oh yeah, and there'll be plenty of maps.
Questions.
Better handwriting than mine. So.
Great.
Something that we also probably should start thinking about and considering is impact fees. I would like to get permission from the board to look into starting that process.
Can you say more about what that actually means? I'm just not as familiar with what this.
So, so let's, let's take ABC Builders is going to build a a large complex in town that's going to affect schools and, and other interstructures. This would help to offset costs that would be associated with that.
It's basically a fee that ABC Builders would be charged in order so it doesn't fall on every, the town itself.
Okay.
Right, so instead of taxpayers having to pay for it, ABC Realty, who's, who's causing the problem, would, would be the ones paying.
And for how many years would they be responsible for covering that?
That would be something we would have to look into.
Things like that, that are very new to us. Should we or could we get some experts in?
Oh yeah, that's.
To work with us.
That's, that's.
Because I don't.
That, that would be the process. We would have, we would have people like, like Andrew come in and give us presentations on what that is gonna do, what the impact is, how, how it will affect everything that it affects.
Yeah.
Yeah. Meredith does impact fees, don't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, most communities around us are now doing impact fees.
We need some, we need some technical.
Oh, absolutely, and that's what I'm asking permission to do, is to bring in the technical people to start the ball rolling on that.
Sounds great.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yes.
Can I make a question about that, please?
Yes, ma'am.
These technical people that you're bringing in to assist you with how to generate the data for the impact fees are people that you selected, not that the developer has, correct?
Correct, the board selects.
The board, that's what I mean, right?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
Yes, not the developer, the board.
We're, we're talking general, the whole zoning ordinance, we're not talking about any specific lot.
No, I.
But, but for the impact fee.
No, I'm talking about impact.
For the impact fees, it would be the board who makes the decision based upon, so they're gonna come in, they're gonna give us a presentation on everything. And then in March, the voters will get to vote whether we want to do this or not. And they will also be making a presentation at that very long meeting that we're going to have.
Yeah, we need to look at how they're figured, when they're figured, what they, what they.
Yeah, what triggers them to be figured?
Yeah.
What, what they're going to do, what, the entire process, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
So exactly what do you mean when you said that the voters would get to have an opinion or, or to vote on it?
It will be part of the town warrant of March of twenty-five if I can get it done in time.
Changing wording in the zoning ordinance. That's what we're working on, zoning ordinance.
Right, anything on the zoning ordinance goes before the town voters.
Yep.
And they have to be the ones to make the change. We, we can
Propose.
Propose, which is what we're gonna do. We want you to come to these meetings and give us your input, okay? This only makes it better for everybody because you know what's going on, okay? We want your input, don't, don't think I, I very much want, if you, this is what you want, this is what we get. Okay, those charrettes that he was talking about?
What is that?
Oh, they're wonderful. I've been in a couple of them now. I really honestly, I love them. So you get, you get developers, you get the money people, you get planning people, and you get the town people all together. And we sit down in a room and, and we brainstorm over all these different ideas that we could do. Focus, yeah, and then you break off into little focus groups and stuff. And the, the best part for this is it will help us later on because after we get done in March, we're gonna start on the master plan. And this will help us with the master plan.
And those are all facilitated, right?
They're facilitated, right, they have that people, that's what they do in the planning, is facilitate these things. And it, it's a great process for a community to really, the community to say what they want, how they want and where they want. And as you can see on the map, we're, we're limited in where we are right now, but we could change that drastically if, if the voters wanted to. But you have to have a plan to do that. You heard him talk about the, the mill complex, how there's money to take that down, how to make that into a, into a wonderful area. Last weekend, I got the opportunity to see an area which was that, just that. It was a horrible nasty mill area around a river and everything. It was all taken down, was made into a beautiful park, and then they had nice office buildings and stuff around it. We don't have quite as much space as, as they did there, but we're actually very close. So it could generate jobs for us. It could make some great, good paying office building stuff, data entry, data stuff, you know, medical stuff, who knows?
Yeah, we don't have any medical facilities.
Right, and, and you heard him talking about Bino? The town is looking to do a
Economic Development Committee.
Economic Development Committee. Bino will be somebody that will be very important to that. And like he said, he has all these contacts around that are looking to be in an area like this because we have the access to Route Three, we have the access to I ninety-three, we have that nice interchange and everything, we have potential. We just have to get there, we have to have the vision to move forward.
Andy knows where the grant money is available.
And he really knows where the grant money is, and this other guy is gonna help him.
Is he gonna be on the Economic Development Committee?
I don't know. That's a slum.
And I, we haven't, that committee's kind of.
It's just starting.
Determined, yeah. We've, we've asked him to be on it, yes.
Yep. So, yes, ma'am?
That's the charrette's meetings, it sounds similar to like town meetings.
It, it, it is a type of a town meeting with all these experts that lead you and guide you and say, yes, you can do that if you do this, you can do this if you do that. They have the expertise to know, to guide you into what you can and can't do, both legally and looking at the land. Yep.
Because I was in Northfield for a little while and I was like, huh, sounds a lot like.
Yep, it's a former town meeting.
They often start with brainstorming, big concept ideas. And then begin to talk about what is feasible, what's gonna work here, what isn't gonna work, what can we, what two things could we maybe put together? So it starts, it starts with the big picture and begins to narrow down some ideas.
Sounds like.
Yeah.
It's cold.
Yep, and they also tell you where the funds is to do stuff. Which helps.
So do you need a motion for this?
All right.
Do you need a motion for the looking into?
Yes.